A call to order the Cascade Charter Township Planning Commission for Monday, January July 18th, 2022. For Article One, we'll record the attendance. Member Rappin and member Deering are not present and are excused. Moving on to Article Two, the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand if you can.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Moving on to Article Three, approve the current agenda. I hear a motion.
So moved.
So moved, support and supported. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move forward. Article Four, does any member wish to disclose a conflict of interest?
No.
Hearing none, we'll move on. Article Five, accept the minutes of the process recommendation subcommittee. Your motion.
Moved to accept.
Moved to accept by our trustee Nordhook. Support, support by member Engle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move forward. Article Six, now, if any visitors wishing to speak, we have a public hearing on the ward matter. We do not on GDP, so if you are here and would like to speak on any matter other than the ward hearing, feel free to step forward, state your name and address. Do we have anybody on Zoom? Going once. Okay, moving on. Article Seven, case number twenty-two dash three seven two zero, Ward. Is this your first time up? Second. That must have been Ralph's meeting and the other one.
Okay, we have an application from the wards for a type one special use permit to have a six-foot fence in their front yard. This is coming after last year, they had a different fence made of wood posts that the road commission requested that they remove, which they did, and then they've come up with a new solution for this fenced enclosure that they're requesting to have out just during the growing season to keep the deer out, which is why they need the six feet. It's made of six-foot tall stakes and then wrapped with netting and has a small little gated enclosure entrance. And they are proposing to just have it during the growing season, so it would be helpful probably to hear from the applicant when they think would be a good time to take it out and put it in each year so that there can be an agreement between the township and the wards. We did receive a letter of support, which was included in the packet, and then a couple others that I sent to you earlier this week. And yeah, that's, that's the gist of that application.
Excellent. Any questions for staff?
Yes.
Yes.
Is the gated enclosure included in part of the fencing that will be going up and coming down, or will that gated enclosure stay up full-time?
Um, I, be a good question for the applicant. It wasn't specified either way.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Is the applicant present? Would you be willing to step forward and state your name and address for the record, please?
Robin Ward, eighteen ninety-six Country Brook.
Welcome.
Thank you for taking the time for this.
Yeah, absolutely. Would you like to make a statement before we start peppering you with questions? Member Rollin, you have a question?
Yeah, the, the, the gate. I mean, is that part of the fence that's gonna go up and come down?
Yes, that'll go up and come down.
Okay, and then, yeah, another question.
Yeah.
What are your proposed dates for going up and what are your proposed date for going down?
So, I mean, in general, it's, it's kind of contingent on Frost, and I think I would say probably pretty comfortably no earlier than May first. I would think with tomatoes and kind of later in the season stuff, no later than, I guess, the end of October, mid-October.
Any other questions for the applicants? Yes.
My understanding is you had a previous enclosure prior to this version?
We didn't. If, if, I don't know what kind of timeline we got here, but I'll tell you.
I'd like to understand the background.
Yep. So this actually wasn't just last year, was as COVID started. You know, because we all know kids are at home, distance learning, everything's, perhaps the world is coming to an end. So we figured it was not a bad time to grow some tomatoes, some green beans, and something that I was raised doing these things, and we just really didn't have any good spot on our property to do that, other than right in the front. And so tore up some of the setup there, and actually without consulting the ordinance, that was our error. Was putting a, what would have been a permanent, would have looked very nice, but it would have been permanent, would have been against the Cascade Township ordinance. Kind of a nice, excuse me, enclosure that would have kept the deer out. I think probably about not too long, but soon into construction. It wasn't, it definitely wasn't up yet. I think it would, no, it was not near completion. Got a letter. Talked to the ordinance. Person that's in Madison's position previously. Spoke with him and found out that it was against the ordinance, so we took it down. We came up with another solution. There was really just like a trellis kind of thing for the raspberries, but the, you know, didn't do anything. So we did that for a couple of years of trying to figure out, so maybe what are we gonna do about these deer? We got basically only cucumbers. Turns out deer don't like cucumbers, didn't know that, but in case you guys are wondering, at least the local deer. Over the winter, really kind of racking our mind, brains with this, trying to figure out how to do it. So we actually had the brilliant idea to actually look at the ordinance and read through it. There's all the language in there on fences, so I looked at, how's a fence defined? And said, if that fence is any permanent, you guys, you know, can look it up, but it's the idea is it's permanent, and so we thought, oh, so we'll just do this, you know, temporary kind of thing. Put that up, and then within not too long, get the letter, and don't know who was concerned. I doubt that they were concerned about fencing ordinance, or this, someone don't like it for their own reasons. But my guess is they were unaware that this was a temporary thing. I didn't have any neighbors talk to us about the situation, other than numerous neighbors, many of them are here, but even, even many that aren't here would compliment us and, well, the garden looks so nice, and how nice, what a nice thing to have in the neighborhood. It's temporary, our plan was it was gonna be temporary, put it up in the spring to get done in the fall, and then kind of, kind of go from there. So that's, that's the background of that, and it really was our intent to be consistent with Cascade Township ordinance.
So, yes.
I just have a question, and maybe instructed towards staff more than you, but the staff or comments say that you were notified by the road commission that it was a violation. To me, when I read that, I think like the road commission was worried about sight, like, you know, pull, like a corner pulling out to be able to view when it says road commission.
We were not contacted by the road commission for this. We were contacted by the road commission, I guess, three years ago, when we started this. I did speak with somebody at the road commission at that point. He indicated, and I don't have a record of this, other than my recollection, but he indicated he was not concerned, or eventually said, well, just you can't have anything permanent up there. So, okay, that makes sense. Would it be okay if we had a garden out there? And he actually with quite colorful language indicated that he was not concerned about us having the garden in front, or sort of indicating that was below their
Right.
level of interest in intervening.
Well, and again, it's the fence that my question is about. Like, when I hear the road commission was worried about something, usually when we see these reports, the road commission is usually worried for sight distances. So if this does not look like a busy street, I but normally it would be pulling out off from a street because of sight distance. So that's my question, I guess, would the road commission have been concerned about accidents or something like that because the fence would be blocking sight for somebody driving and being able to pull out? That's my, that's my only.
That, that, that's, that's a good question. I mean, I can't speak for the road commission. I can't say they didn't contact us, us this time. That might have been a concern before, but I would encourage you, I mean, you can kind of get it.
Yeah, normally, I would, normally, I would go out there and look at it. I just, I had a full, could not get out there day.
Could, can you see the image from where you're at? The, that's our driveway between us and our neighbors to the north, that you see there, and then the street would be kind of this way. I, I, I think it would be hard pressed to express concern about that blocking.
If it was, it would be your driveway, right?
I guess, but it's, 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 if it's not transparent, it's very close.
Wendy, I can speak to that a little bit, too. So my understanding, this was former director Peterson who had reached out to the road commission, that their primary concern was when there was, when you're gonna use two-by-four posts previously, a couple of years ago. Yeah, that was a safety hazard, different accident of someone, if someone came off the road and hit one of those, they were more concerned about someone hitting them. It was more, more, but if someone came off the road and hitting something that was stuck more in the ground, like that was more firm than what they're proposing at this time.
Mr. Peterson's not with us anymore.
We've got a new and improved.
New and improved.
Oh, no.
I think the worst version at the end of that.
There's perhaps inside stories going on. I don't have access to, I accept that.
You're doing good. Thank you.
Only to suggest that the planning director is no longer with the township, and Brian has since replaced him. Any other questions for the applicant? Yes, member Rissy?
Hey, this is not for applicants, it's for staff, so I'll let him sit down before I.
Any other questions for the applicant? Yes, number all.
Yeah, so why wouldn't you want to cut some trees back behind that front flower bed and just put the garden there, and you can put up a permanent fence, and I mean, it's.
It's something we thought about. If you stood in our front yard, what you'd see is it, there's actually quite a big hill.
Okay.
And then the rest of our property is almost solid oak trees. And another part of the ordinance that I did consult was something about you can do more or less what you want with your land, you know, within certain parameters, but a consideration is if it has a particular negative impact on the aesthetic. Are basically the entire area is all really pretty oak trees, and I think it would look pretty unappealing to have this kind of clear-cut, the nice-looking garden, kind of, that, that was, that was my thought. It would be, I mean, it'd be expensive, too, and I wouldn't be so sure it would work. But that, you can see in that area. I encourage you all, you have a chance just to drive by and see, it looks very nice, and I if they had, I had one to my wife for all that, but there's a nice little flower garden behind that. That's kind of more of a shaded kind of thing, so that that works with that area, but I think it'd be very challenging to do the other approach, and probably wouldn't work, and would make the neighborhood less appealing.
Who would have thought that there would be so much regulation for just a garden?
I have no reaction to that.
Any additional questions? Here, thank you so much. We, we may call you after the public hearing if there's any questions. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
This is slated for a public hearing. Can I get a motion for going to public hearing?
So moved.
Move by member Rissy, supported by this chairman, actually. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we are in public hearing. If you'd like to speak on this matter, I'd ask that you come forward to the podium and say your name and address for the record. Do we have anybody on Zoom? Go ahead. If you could just move to the podium, and again, your name and address for the record.
My name is Roger Rittenhouse. I live at eighty-one fifty-seven Bull Drive, which is in the same subdivision, but a perpendicular street. Yeah, I worked as a senior attorney for Social Security Administration. And before that, I wrote ordinances for a city, for two cities. So I'm sort of aware of, of the purpose of the ordinances and what, what the my understanding is this is on the right-of-way for roads. So I would think the purpose of the ordinance is be to either two things, just appearance and its effect on property values, and then safety purposes. And as Ms. Ward said, it's, it's only up during the growing season. And now he has metal posts in, which if he's on a straight part of the road, there are no intersections by him. So it, it doesn't obstruct anyone's view, but even if a car drove off the road and hit them, it wouldn't cause much damage to a car. Because the posts aren't in the ground very far. I mean, I can understand. I understand the problem if it were four-by-four sitting concrete or two-by-four sitting concrete, or two-by-four set three feet deep. But that's not the situation here. And in terms of appearance, I, I think it's as nice as it could be to keep deer out. I mean, it's not a chain-linked fence. It's, it's black netting. And just knowing what the property is, so a lot of the trees in the area are well over a hundred years old. I mean, they're just huge trees. They're like a hundred feet tall. It, this is the only place on his property where he gets sunlight, where he can grow vegetables. I mean, I have the same problem. We have a very limited flower garden. It's right up by the road. And everything else we have to grow has to be shade tolerant. So it, it, he really doesn't have any choice on where he puts it. I think he's done a really good job. I, I don't have any objections to it, and I don't see where it would really be against any of the concerns they have when they wrote, when they wrote the ordinance. The six-feet-tall fence part, I guess that's just what you have to have to keep out deer. Because we have a four-foot fence and the deer just like step over to get in the backyard. I mean, we have hostas, which we can grow in the shade, which is like deer candy, deer lettuce, but I mean, a four-foot fence does nothing. We even have two dogs that run the yard. And, you know, we go out in the morning and there are pastas and moedown. But, so, you know, clearly, six-feet fence is what you need around vegetables, so. I actually like it. I like that they're trying to grow vegetables, so I have no objection.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Nice to meet you all, the trustee members and planning members.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Charlotte Stigenga, eighteen twenty-four, Country Brook Drive, southeast, five houses away. And I want to say what a wonderful thing their garden has been for our little neighborhood. Like they, they said they started it during COVID, and when more people were laid off work, walking, everybody kind of wanted to congregate. That garden got so much positive attention in our neighborhood, you wouldn't believe it. We all followed what vegetables were coming, the neighbors that lived down the hill by me. We talked about this garden. This garden was a wonderful thing. And they have such a good attitude about, you know, coming here and making it legal and wanting to do right, that the first year that they were told to close it, they did, and their two boys were just devastated, because at first, the whole family was out there working, working, working on this. But anyway, the wife is very artistic, so you don't know the half of it. She's got a background, a beautiful matching flowers that tie in, a beautiful little painted wheelbarrow. It's a piece of work. You should come and see it. It's delightful. And it's, and it's really adds value to our neighborhood, and it teaches us all. I've had a garden two for the last years. And it teaches us all that, you know, we need to start thinking about growing and canning and saving vegetables. Times are hard. What's with it? With our beautiful lots, if it's not hurting anything, why can't we do this in peace and legally? Thank you. I love the garden, so do my neighbors.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Hello, and good afternoon to all of you present. My name is Maria Rocco, eighteen twenty-seven, Country Brook Drive, just down the road. In full disclosure, I am a retired real estate attorney. So I commend them for being so gracious and in coming here and trying to work with the township and to make everything work properly and to have this beautiful garden. And I concur that this is not just a garden, this is a piece of art. It grows. Little figurines appear at different stages. There's different decorations that tie into the, to the garden. It is not just this one piece with protection against the deer. It is a work of art that is alive and that is growing. And it has brought the neighborhood together. We talk about it. We discuss it. We look at it. We go to get advice from them. And I will note that we also have a small garden, and we have a four-foot fence. And I see Bambi and Bambi's mother in there, and they just want to go in there and eat my cucumbers and eat my squash, and so it is something that, to be able to create a work of art and still be within the township guidelines is something that needs to be committed. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate all of your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Jim Chassola, eighteen thirty, Country Brook. Everything they said is right. Maria's back off the easement. She can put up a six-foot fence, true?
We need a lot more detail.
Just later, just talked. Oh, you need more detail?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I thought that it was all about being on the road commission site.
No, I was asking a question about the road commission with our report.
Okay, I just had that question about other people in my neighborhood who have the, the heart and soul in gardening.
Sounds to me like we should feature the garden in the next Cascadian. Sounds pretty impressive. It looked very nice when I profiled it. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak? Hearing none, can I get a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
So moved by member Engle. Supported by member Rissy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Any discussion? Hearing none, can somebody make a motion?
Yeah, a couple of cut things.
Yeah, go ahead.
So first of all, thank you guys for showing up. I mean, that means a lot to me. I can probably say for the rest of the, the commissioners, it means a lot to them. We, we need to hear from neighbors and people within the community, so. I, I think the two things that I have are the dates. I mean, it's funny, because I was thinking May first. I don't know if I was thinking October thirty-first. That's six months, right? I don't know if September's, but I mean, I know.
I, I understand what he's saying though, about if you have a warm fall and you have tomatoes and some plants that are growing into.
I'm a Rissy.
I, I don't want to drag this out at all, but I'm I've been, I've, I've been vocal before about six-foot fences in the front yard. We had one not too long ago. It's a lot of discussion that night, and I guess my concern is, I look at this as a net, not a fence. It's pretty transparent. You don't really notice that, and it's only seasonal. And so I guess my, my question to staff is, I'm curious if anybody I'm, I'm curious if there was any discussion about if how this met the ordinance. I, I'm, I'm trying to understand that aspect of it. If, I don't know, I mean, you know, I look at our definition of fence, and it talks about a permanent barrier or partition. And I don't really see this as a permanent barrier partition, the way it's being described. I'm not trying to put you guys on the spot, per se. I'm just, again, I'm trying to under understand a little bit about that.
Yeah, and it also speaks to enclosures, too. And I think that's a big part of it, too, is when you enclose an area. That's another factor that we look into, so that's creating that aspect of a fence as well, keeping something in, keeping something out. So it looks, that, I think that's a big part of it as well. And I think all the points that you speak to of it being transparent, it being temporary, definitely helps their case in asking for a special use permit. I'm sorry, still want to have that, that ability to regulate. If someone comes out and puts a ten-foot-tall one of these in the front yard, you know, I think that's where an issue comes up and want to be able to regulate that. So again, that's why, you know, staff sort of getting approval of the special use permit for the six-foot-tall fence.
And I mean, if it was like an orange net, I mean, I would want to, yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, you'd want to, you'd want to see it and hear about it, wouldn't you?
Well, I yes, but I also, I'm a firm believer in property rights, and I, you know, sometimes micromanagement isn't always, isn't always the right way to go, and sometimes maybe it's orange and you just don't like it. No, but I, I guess I'm, I'm here's where I'm at. I'll just I don't see any problem with the request. But I do question whether or not they should have needed to make the request, I guess. I, I, I'm not so sure. I agree that it fits under the definition of the fence. I think what he had initially probably did, but their solution that they've brought forth, I think they found a way to make that work, because they're saying it's temporary. They're, they're, they're describing it as temporary. You know, maybe a better description would be seasonal. It's not permanent. So, I mean, I don't think we're opening any are we opening any precedents by, you know, approving something that's seasonal as being permanent? I mean, is that, I mean, I know I'm digging really far out into left field here, but I guess my, my position is I don't have an issue with it, particularly at the dates they're, they're requesting. I guess my, my concern is whether or not I, I may disagree with staff on this one, which I don't typically do, but I, but that's where I'm at. Trustee Nordhook?
I have no problem with this particular one. I think I'd still like to keep it on a case-by-case basis. That's this particular one I have no issues with.
Absolutely. I agree with that, and, and I'd like to see whoever's gonna make the motion, I don't want to do it, is that we put specific dates in there, you know? If it's end of October, that's fine, but I mean, fence can't go up before May first. Fence has to be down by October thirty, or whatever.
Number, of course, since you had a comment?
No, it was just that.
Okay. So would you like to make a motion?
I can.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve with the stipulations that it has to, it can not be put erected prior to May first, and it needs to be taken down by October thirty-first.
Okay, so for case number twenty-two dash three seven two zero, number, of course, I'm just making a motion to approve with a start date of May first and a conclusion or an end date of October thirty-first.
Support.
Supported by Vice Chair Moxley. All those in.
Just a note on that, Chris, discussion, because there's another condition mentioned.
Oh.
And as a staff recommendation, was that part of your motion?
Or would you amend it to add the Kent County Road Commission has the right to remove any parts of the fence and garden with the right-of-way?
Yes.
Number, of course, so, yeah, so moves to amend. Vice Chair Moxley, do you support?
Yes, I support.
Continues to support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. If you're here for that matter, you certainly don't need to stay, but it's, we'd love to have you.
You're welcome, Joe.
Moving on to case number twenty-two dash three seven one seven, GDP Properties LLC, Douglas DeCoc.
All right, so here the applicant's requesting site plan approval for a fifty-five thousand square foot addition to an existing industrial building. That will result in a total building size of just over one hundred thousand square feet. The site's located on the north side of Thirty-Sixth Street between Patterson and Craft Avenues. The site currently includes a building with what are called two wings that are connected by an enclosed walkway. So this part, we're looking at what would be the west wing of the existing building. So the applicant and property owner have received a variance to allow for a lot split with the proposed property line being located between those two wings, resulting in a setback that is less than required twenty-five feet, which would be the section here, excuse me, the section here. So they've received a variance for that, and then the new building addition is located, so it meets the twenty-five-foot setback, along with other height setback and parking requirements of the zoning district. So the new property line will run through where the enclosed walkway would be in that area there. So the walkway will need to be removed, and I'm recommending that the applicant provide a bond in the amount of twenty thousand dollars to ensure that that walkway is removed. The site plan's been reviewed by the building and fire departments, who have indicated that each new building will need to be served by separate utilities per the building and fire codes. The township engineers reviewed and approved the plans and provided their comments as well, and they also note that the applicant will need to record a stormwater maintenance agreement. A photometric plan's been submitted that meets township requirements, and then also a comprehensive landscape plan is A photometric plan has been submitted that meets township requirements and then also a comprehensive landscape plan has been submitted as well. And I'm recommending that the applicant provide a landscape bond in the amount of ten thousand dollars. So at this time, staff are recommending site point approval for the fifty-five thousand square foot building addition with the five conditions that are listed in the staff report in your packets.
This is the first time we're seeing this?
It is. Yeah, I, I don't think they brought anything recently for this one.
Scott, do you remember anything? This, I feel like this came at us a few years ago.
I think we had something across the street.
It was two buildings combined though, but maybe.
I think, I don't think this one's been in front.
Building's been vacant for a while, hasn't it?
It has, yeah. It's been, I think since the seventies, it might have been first built. But yeah, so essentially two separate buildings with an enclosed walkway in between which, and per the zoning ordinance laws for one. So then they're just splitting it between those two.
And they're in a single school district. I know we've had issues with that.
They are, yeah, this one.
Okay, any questions for staff?
This time.
Okay. The applicant present, I suspect they are. Say your name, please, for the record.
I'm Doug DeCock, representing GDP Properties LLC. And I'm here also with John Mail from Excel Engineering. And any questions you have, we're happy to, to take them. And we're thinking about putting a garden in now.
Can I make one motion? You might want to get electric fence.
Who, who is going to be the tenant? Who, who will be the tenant?
The tenant is, I guess I can say that. I think it's probably on the plan.
Yeah, Magnum.
But it's Magnum. We're still trying to keep that down. They prefer to keep it down.
Yeah, fair enough. Does anybody have any questions of the street of Cook, why he's up here? Before he sits down a second?
Yeah, what, so Magnum's moving in there. Is this a new location for them? Are they moving from another location? I mean, is this?
They are moving, it's, it's both, actually. They're, they're expanding their operation, but a lot of their research and development, which is now done on, what street is that, John? Do you recall? I want to think maybe it's Craft.
Okay.
Even, and they're going to be moving out of that building into this with that and expanding the research and development area too, so.
Some more jobs.
Yep, more jobs.
Plastic plate we move in here as well as just, is it plastic plate that's moving here or is it?
No.
Yeah. Yes, sorry.
So I, I. I just want to make sure I have my bearings right here, so to speak. It looks to me like the, that you're going to demo a portion of the building on the south end.
Correct.
And then the addition will be on the west end or west side, I guess.
The addition will be this area right here.
Right.
This, this area exists right now and it also goes down further like.
That's, that's, okay, that's what I was, that's what I'm trying to figure. Okay.
You can see.
Ah, yes, there it is. There we go.
This piece of the building is going on.
Okay, understood. Thank you. That's helpful.
So what are you going to do on the backs? I mean, the L shaped, I'm guessing the. Newcomer, the company's moving into the new one and then who's, what's going on with the L shaped one?
It's just one big part of it. Okay. Leave it vacant right now.
Do you know how long that has been vacant?
It's, it was owned by Med Data, which is next door. And I think, I don't know how much they ever occupied that. We, we struck a deal with them to buy this part of it. They don't have that many people on the other side of the building even, so. I, I don't know how long it's been vacant. I think this is originally an old Grueter's building, I recall, so.
I see.
How many, how many jobs do you, you're planning on?
I, they have not given that information to me and I just don't know.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
When you mentioned they're on craft currently.
Don't quote me on that.
You suspect they're on craft currently. Do you suspect that they're on craft in Cascade or in crafting Kentwood?
I'm pretty sure it's Cascade.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this would be a, within the township relocation.
And it's a building they leased there and I, I just don't know that much about it.
I, I understand.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any discussion?
Scroll past the garden a minute. Okay, I would. I would make a site plan approval. Recommending staff recommendations in case number twenty-two dash three seven one seven for GDP Properties LLC.
Motion made by member Rissy, support, support by member Angle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on, article nine, do we have any old business we have?
We're all older.
Yeah. We have anything from our, what, last remaining subcommittee? We have, we have two still, right?
Technically, I can't even keep track anymore.
Recommendation hasn't been made, right? So that's this week?
I believe. Which company you're referring to?
Ross, when do you go?
We did, we did.
How did that go?
How did that go?
Very well.
Ralph did great. I was not. Trustee Norton, what was your interpretation being up here?
Very nice. I've actually asked base to put it on our next agenda to, to accept the recommendations because that really wasn't done.
Okay.
So at the next meeting. To, to accept the recommendations from the committee.
I think that's a good way to approach it, actually, to make the presentation and then accept that after people have a chance to digest it.
And Alan and I did stay within the fifteen minutes suggested by trustee Norton.
Excellent.
Zipping right along.
He's a smart guy.
And we had a lot of good dialogue actually with the other trustees, a lot of.
Oh, good, good.
So you could tell that they actually read the booklets and checked them out and they had some in-depth questions and the answer for them.
Good. I spoke to a few of them early last week and encouraged them to read what was coming ahead of time. Not that they wouldn't otherwise, but. It sounds like that, that did occur.
Were there anybody, was there anybody in the audience or up here that booed at you or?
The dissent, yeah.
No.
Ben.
Ben?
Audience.
And I do appreciate the township staff, especially Jessica, who put together the booklets. For all the people, not only at this table, but also the trustees. That was a lot of work to assemble all that.
Excellent.
It was done nice. Thank you.
Good, good. Happy to hear it. Any other comments on any of the other subcommittee activity?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Okay. Moving on, article ten, any other business?
I have some.
Yes, member Rissy.
In the past, I believe we, and I didn't verify this, but I believe. Our agendas used to show the address under the heading of the article.
It did.
And it does not now, and I like it better the other way. So I would make a request that we include the, the site address on the actual agenda. Sure. I think it's not just easy for us to find it when we want to do a drive by, but I think it's also good when it's posted for the public. If they see their street on there. They're going to zoom in on it. Because a lot of times the names on the agenda don't, don't necessarily jump out the way an address or street name would. Especially if it's a pending purchase or something. Sure.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Brian, when do we have?
August eighth is our next.
Do we have anything exciting on it yet?
We do have a few things on it. There's at least one accessory building. The only one.
The. Is that the dog? Dog accessory building?
That's the one holding the cars. So I think, I think it's just one accessory building on that one. And then August eighth and August fifteen, we actually have another one on it.
I'd suggest, by the way, if we can get that garden in the Cascadian somehow, some way. I, it's much, you know, just as much of the neighbors that came forward, I think that, and it sounds like she, you know, from what I saw and I drove by it, it was pretty well decorated, so. Maybe encourage others to, to garden, so.
Maybe that's something the parks committee can look into.
You know? Do we have anybody here on the parks committee?
And I should know for the record that there are, this is not the, the only garden in Cascade. A lot of folks have been wonderful.
One in my backyard, just saying.
Do you have colorful, like figurines that come out at different stages of the garden?
I was very intrigued, but I will say that I didn't say to all of the people that were saying they have deer eating. They sell solar powered electric fences that you just put on a thing and you wrath that a couple of times and the deer will not jump it to get into your garden. They will.
Less than four feet above the dump?
Yeah, you can put them about three. They don't have to be very tall at all.
Does it keep small children out too?
It does.
I would. Chairman, I meant to ask them what kind of worms they're using in their garden.
I know. I was like, oh, we can't.
We're going to talk about the input and. Excellent. Do we have any, do we have any visitors on Zoom that are wishing to speak, moving on to article eleven? All right, with that, here a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A move by member Angle, supported by member Rissy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. How much longer are you chairman?